Go ahead, your call is meeting to order at six o'clock. Please rise.
Day of our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you all for coming. I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second, having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing on the motion carries. I now need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, this calls for a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Grissa?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee B?
Yes.
Trustee Quinby?
Yes.
So thank you all for coming. This is still going to take you out for just a short time and then once we're done, we'll let you back in.
I was up there Friday morning.
Okay, so we come out of the executive session. We go on into, there is no exec, there's no action items at this moment. Go ahead into announcements. The first one being that I just want to remind everybody that these board meetings are our business meetings that are held in public, they are not public board meetings, and that we are governed by Idaho Code Title thirty-three, Chapter five, Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, or the IDAPA, and we follow our district policies. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not a time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for questions and answers. The board in its discretion may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input received. However, no discussion or conversations take place. All input will be received within a three-minute time limit. We have student accolades. Team Fish Tales won first place at the IDX Challenge. Congratulations. That's pretty awesome. And the Lakeland High School Boys Basketball was awarded the Sportsmanship Award from IHSAA for this year. Jimmy and Matt, the boys and the coaches. We have several people that have signed up for public input. Do we have the list?
No other list, it's right up there on the.
Alright, that's. First person up for public comment is Jacqueline Myers. You did present this. Do you need to step forward, or are you comfortable with the board reading your support?
If I could read it, that would be.
That'd be perfect.
Thank you for having me. To the Lakeland Joint School District Board of Trustees. My name is Jacqueline Myers and I'm a resident of Rathrum and mother of three children in the Lakeland Joint School District. We have many years ahead of us in the district. I am speaking today not only as a mom, but also as the leader of the Lakeland Parents' Rights in Education Group that is comprised of many parents and other community members in our school district. I would like to encourage the board to vote to approve Policy three-two-eight-one. Radical gender ideology has no place in our schools and I fully support this board's commitment to keep the focus on academic achievement and fundamentals of education. With Idaho Senate Bill eleven hundred, Idaho Statute thirty-two, the Idaho Parental Rights Act, and Idaho Statute thirty-three, the Parental Rights in Education, all in support of Lakeland's proposed Policy three-two-eight-one. The last step that we need is to finalize the district's agreement with the policy that parents are ultimately responsible for overseeing their children's education. Just as those who support the new gender ideology wouldn't want their kids to be taught that transgenderism is harmful, all parents should have the right to choose how to educate their children on controversial topics. Students also have a right to religious freedom and cannot be forced to engage in activities that violate their conscience. This policy protects all parents and students, no matter what their view is on the topic, and keeps it out of the schools and in the hands of parents, which is where it belongs. Allowing the schools to focus on academics will create an atmosphere free of divisive political rhetoric. Students who identify as transgender deserve the same educational opportunities as their peers and should be treated with respect and compassion. A compassionate response, however, should not mean denying the fact that there are real physical differences between the sexes, especially in situations where these differences impact privacy or fair play in sports. Recognizing and acknowledging established scientific facts about human biology is not ideological and is not a form of bigotry. Please continue in your work to partner with parents and vote in favor of Policy three-two-eight-one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Okay, that was the one that said they were not going to be able to attend. Okay, so then we would have Nate?
Opus to do.
Okay, we have received your input. Okay. Jordan Young? Okay. Judith Fujimoto? Anita Vida?
I'm a DUCIC community member. Good evening Chairman Thompson, Superintendent Arnold, and Trustees. I would like to thank the Policy Committee for the common sense approach taken with respect to Policy thirty-two eighty-one, gender identity and sexual orientation. Returning care of children back to their parents or guardian, especially in such intimate areas as these, is valuable to our children. It allows Lakeland School District to do what is intended to do, educate students in academics to help prepare them for their future. On another subject, I noticed that on the April twenty-twenty-three bill list, line one hundred find five eight hundred, Lakeland purchased child protection notebooks in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars from the Committee for Children. It concerns me that we are supporting this organization which supports social, emotional learning, and diversity, equity, and inclusion to achieve social justice. A quick look at their website will confirm this. I spoke with an elementary counselor several months ago and went over the Second Step Program, a Committee for Children resource, and was assured it was only used for bullying and emotional support. In the use of ESAR funds portion of the district's yearly operational plan, in addition to Second Step, the Sources of Strength Program is cited as a used in Lakeland. Also mentioned is continued professional development for staff. I don't know if the Committee for Children is where the professional development comes from, but their programs are full of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have been in six different classrooms over the last few months, both elementary and middle school, as part of the Curriculum Committee Observation Team. The relationship I saw in all six classrooms between teacher and students is what we need to be fostering. I saw children who were seen by their teacher, active participants in the lesson being modeled, not afraid to speak up and give suggestions, and teachers who heard their students respected what they said, right or wrong, and dialoguing with their students. That's what will make a difference for these students, this relationship between teachers and school staff, not a program from an outside source. It's clear to me that your teachers know how to interact with their students and don't leave the ideas espoused in the Committee for Children Resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a point of clarification?
Yes.
We have a point of clarification. Do you want to come back on that? The ESAR funds for SOS, just simply because that wasn't listed in, I didn't see it in the letter you submitted. Where did you say that you found that listed?
It's, I reached it up the page. So it's in the use, so in the yearly operational fund, in the ESAR, the use of ESAR funds portion, and I highlighted it. Can I give it to, it's, it's page two, and I think it's the application for ESAR funds. And it says, the district will continue to support students socially through evidence-based programs such as Rachel's Challenge, Sources of Strength, and Second Step.
It was that on the district's website?
It is. Oh, I went to the yearly operational plan.
Okay. Very nice. Okay. Yeah, we'll have to look at that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
What was the date of that?
It would have been under the last administration. June twenty ninth, twenty twenty. And I remember when we went over curriculum, we did attribute that they could use the Second Step Program, but it was only for the.
I don't know if I have enough time, but it's standard, I'll agree on the, all the students go through it.
We just need to bring up the SOS, like we're job there.
Okay. Thank you all for your input. Moving on to the financial reports. Reports, the first one being financial reports. Budget status report. Sorry. Oh yeah, I do have a comment. It looks like. Chelsea. On the attendance, the enrollment attendance report, we've missed and we've got lots of precares and we have no seniors. So I think we just didn't copy and paste the numbers correctly or something, I don't know, but they're all out of whack.
Brian's still working on this report. So can you do more if we will answer the question?
Oh, okay. Alright then. Well, the numbers are all out of whack. Sorry, I thought you had.
I apologize if that's the case of, on the attendance?
Yep, there's no seniors and there's a negative two hundred and sixty-five absences for pre-K.
Everything shifted over an entire column to the right.
Yeah, I can make that correction and send that to the board.
That'd be great. On the ledger accounts. Can you explain why we have an activities account, an athletic activities account with forty-eight thousand dollars in it? And then each sport has its own muddies? Is that, it's ones, a credit, the other ones, a dividend amount?
So the schools, each building does a little bit differently. My hope is next year I can make this more streamlined so we can know that this is what we're doing in each building. But what they do typically is they purchase items out of the athletic account, say. So every single item that is purchased from here is going to be just pulled from that athletic account. Yes, each sport has kind of their own fundraising pot that they do so they can buy things like items that they need or some different kinds of support they need for that program. But the overall purchasing for all of their programs typically comes out of the athletic account. Then they'll have things that'll zero that out at the end of the year. So they'll have sponsorship money that will go to zero out. They'll have gate money that'll go to zero that out. And it just kind of washes all at the end of the year. It's just the way they like to see their accounting throughout the year and what's being and how it's all being spent.
Okay, so that dividend amount in activities should be offset by all the credited amounts in the L accounts?
Yes.
Okay. Because it didn't, but that's, I was thinking that's what they were doing.
Yeah, and so it's not just going to be the L accounts, there will be some other line items as well that'll help zero that out at the end of the year.
Okay. And then why do we have a sponsors account?
So they typically put sponsors, those funds from things like in their, in the gyms, they have the scoreboard that has Leschwah on there. So Leschwah will pay a certain amount a couple times a year that goes in the sponsorship account. Any other signage that they have on the property typically goes in that sponsor account.
Do you know why the officials would be in a devoted amount of like ten thousand four hundred and twenty dollars? Would I know that we've warranted and, to my knowledge, paid?
Yes, so they typically go by, they invoice, each building will invoice the district after sports are over for the fall and then for the winter and for the spring. So they'll just kind of let it build up for a little bit and once they are done with that activity or those for the year, they'll request the money back from us and it's that over.
Okay, but like I just said, I know that like last month we warranted, I think it was ten or fifteen thousand, but yet, and this is Lakeland's that I'm looking at, we're, we're devoted ten thousand four twenty. So in my mind, that money should have, because this is March, through the thirty-first, the warrants were of last month at the beginning of the month, it should have been all wiped out. Do you know why it wouldn't be?
It's, I'm guessing it's probably because she invoiced for, I can find out for sure, but my guess would be is she invoiced for just fall activities, got the fall activities, hasn't finished. We hadn't quite finished winter activities yet, so she was waiting to finish winter activities to invoice for winter activities. But I can find out for sure and I can get a printout of that.
Okay. And these ledger accounts are just on, this isn't the building's budget, correct? It's just.
That's not their general fund budget, that's just their building.
Okay. Okay, those were just some of my questions. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions on the budget? Report? Budget status report? No. Did you have questions from that? Okay. Going on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes, subcommittee minutes, HR items, regular special bills. Do we have any comments on the minutes from, the regular minutes from the three thirteen twenty-three board meeting? Okay. Do we have any comments on any of them, the subcommittee minutes? I did have one, I'm trying to find, I don't know where it was. Wasn't really listening to that one. There's a comment on here. I don't think this, call picker. Call picker, call. There it is. Okay. The comment within the meeting was, "The board has been very proactive of the community and chosen not to run emergency levies to protect the taxpayer for the past four years." I don't know if that's accurate statement. I know we did not run it last year intentionally. And I know.
Which meeting are you looking at?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We can correct that.
It's the four, the April meeting, or you just. Yeah, because I don't recall that to be accurate.
I think, I, I know we've talked, but I don't know if it was at this meeting about the emergency levy. I think we came to the, how do you mean? That it was, for the last three years, the board has not run an emergency levy. But four would not be accurate, so we can fix those.
Perfect.
And is that correct? It's been three that we haven't run an emergency levy?
Well, the COVID year, which was twenty to twenty-one school year, I don't, I think that one was run. Post-COVID year, the first post-COVID year, I think that one was run as well.
I think that was the year that the board said, no, we used some of the numbers.
Was that?
I've never voted in favor of emergency.
Well, neither have I, but I know there were board members that did.
No, I don't think, since I've been on the board, we'd have to make sure and verify, but I don't think since you and I have been on the board that there has ever been an emergency levy approved.
I know the last two years have not been approved. Yeah, I think the first two, you think first two.
So we can go back and do a little bit of checking. We do need to check on that. So we'll make sure that that number is.
It should be minutes.
Yep.
I just don't remember.
I remember it coming up in the fourth, and now we're not going to run it. But I don't remember, I don't know.
Well, I know we had a big, we had a big, I mean, this last year, there was one that did not come before us.
Right.
Because of new administration, either prior to that, no, we did not do it.
Right, right.
But I think the year before that, it was pushed through because we had the other board members that voted in favor of it, because we did not.
Yeah, I was.
I mean, you weren't on the.
I wasn't on the board yet. Yeah, no, I was just saying that.
Yeah, I came mid-year that year. We'll check. We will get to the bottom of that and we will. We're good on prices and stuff.
Thank you.
And that was the April meeting?
Yeah, that was April three. Okay, on the, on the HR items, any comments or? I do have one resignation that I would like to discuss in executive session. And then, just curious, we have a men's soccer coach?
I know, I saw that. No, it's boys.
Okay, just checking.
They're young men.
Young men, strapping. I would like to say, thank you Chelsea for the breakout on the bills, that was awesome.
So twenty twenty-one, there was a motion to, sorry, it's going to suck in my brain. There was a motion to pass the levy and it failed. In the fall of twenty? September twenty-one, twenty-two school year. But it failed. But there may be others.
The last ownership levy, I believe, was the fall of twenty nineteen, for two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Was approved and then, so that would have happened in the twenty twenty. Calendar year.
Okay. So twenty nineteen, twenty. First year on the board.
So nineteen twenty.
It would have been.
Correct.
Fall of, fall nineteen.
Yeah.
That COVID year.
Yeah, that was in the COVID year.
Yeah, we got the whole packet for it, but it doesn't, I can't read this. This meeting here, yeah, September thirteen of twenty nineteen, so that board meeting, it was on the agenda, but we have to go back and look at the following month's meetings for it. So October of twenty nineteen, the minutes from there should tell us whether that one was approved or not. Thank you for taking care of my task for me, I appreciate it.
But there's still a little bit left. Going to, bills, I did have a question on the child protection notebooks for twelve fifty-four. I was curious what they were.
Which, I know that she, Anita said what line that was asked for.
It's one oh five eight zero zero, March nineteenth. Yep, Committee for Children.
Child protection notebooks K five, do you know what that is then? We will do something.
Okay. Just curious, the new bus for transportation, Brian? I know we'd approved way back when. This is one of those ones, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, the last one was delivered, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they sort of trickled in, so they finally have, it was five buses in total, that finally got delivered.
Have we ever gotten the dance?
No, and I follow up probably three, four weeks ago. With, it's the same dealer, Harbors, is who wanted to bid it. And he says that he has no information from the factory yet and won't be there, so still in process. I can send another note, it was probably around February when they last commented, checked with.
Lisa, what do we use Pine Grove Consulting for?
I believe that is our firewall for technology, that's just the firm that we buy it from. So it's really not consulting, that's their business name, it's really just buying some technology software for the network.
It's a twelve-month renewal for sofas?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a reason the locker room had to be cleaned for thirteen hundred dollars? As opposed to normal?
They get it over sewage.
Oh, that was, that was that?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. In the middle of the basketball game.
I do have a question about bills.
Sure.
Coffee, cocoa, lunch, for twenty-two hundred dollars?
Which one is that? What number one?
Student conferences.
Oh, right here. And that was, yeah, so when we did the student-led conferences, we provide coffee and cookies for the parents at all eleven of the schools.
All eleven schools?
Kevin provides the coffee and the cocoa and then we buy the cookies from Costco.
Sweet cookies.
That's okay.
It is a lot of cookies.
Brian, we have a bill for eleven thousand dollars to safely clean, clean up chemicals and waste in the book. Give us an idea of what that's all about. Yeah, that was actually out the maintenance yard and Panhandle came, Health came out and did an inspection and just said that there had been some materials that had been sitting for a long time that we needed to go clean up. So didn't get to the groundwater, so it was hazardous materials, so Mike took care of it. So it was a combination between maintenance and transportation, that's sort of was a half to do. So going forward, is that something that would not be allowed to accumulate? Yeah, I think Mike wasn't even aware of some when they came out. It definitely was, let me see, things, some of it was in the boneyard and things like that.
We have these speech therapist bills, how many people are we paying for? We have that.
Those are, yeah, so we don't have, we are not fully staffed with speech language people, just so we have some contracts. I am not sure off the top of my head if it's two.
Off the top of my head, that's my thought, but I, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I can check for it. I think it's two. I think it's two. This is a field where there just aren't very many people getting certified.
And then how many administrators do we have, um, with membership to IASA?
All of them.
How many people is that?
Um, roughly twenty.
Okay.
If you count really quickly, I can give you that.
Okay, no, I, it's approximately twenty, right?
Yep.
Okay. Any more questions on the bills?
Yeah, okay. So, um, when you, uh, I didn't have time, but you can go to, um, the Second Step website and look at the, sort of like a scope and sequence of what's covered in those, um, those books. But can you bring us one? Because I don't know that we ever saw one at the curriculum meeting. Um, not a student workbook or whatever this thing is.
I don't know if we are using student workbooks, but I can ask that question.
Well, whatever this, these books are that we're ordering, they're not on any of our lists. I don't know what they are, I'd just like to see. Yeah, we might have seen one, and I don't remember, but I'm, I'm, it doesn't ring a bell.
Okay.
Um, the other thing is, is I believe that we only approved a couple of sections of that curriculum, and it was supposed to be opted in by parents.
Yep, and they, we, they worked diligently at the beginning of this year to get all of those forms.
Okay, I'd like to count, um, on how many of those that we have. And then also, on the same, uh, line, and I've been looking for this too, is there, um, the Department of Health and Welfare reports that we use, uh, RTR, uh, reducing the risk, um, sex ed curriculum at Mountain View?
They, actually, they asked us if we, if we would bring that to the board for approval. Lynn and I did some looking into it and felt like it didn't align with what we were looking for, so we chose not to bring it to you. It's not being used.
Okay, well, they're reporting it to people in their records requests that we're re, that we're using it.
Uh, so we need to let Panhandle Health know that we are not.
Yes, yep.
What was the name of that program?
Uh, reducing the risk.
Thank you.
It's the Department of Health and Welfare's, uh, yeah, they say that, um, since two thousand sixteen, we've been using it. But, yeah, if we can clarify that, that would be great too. And then get some kind of documentation that shows that, you know, we are not using that. Um, because I never saw that it even came before us, I couldn't find it in any, yeah.
We just, we just knew that it was not in alignment, and so we, I'll take the time from the board, so we didn't bring it.
Okay.
Your mom has to look back through, but I'm pretty sure I have the email where we denied, um, we emailed the company, they asked us to do some additional follow-up, and we declined the use of it, and declined it to them, we do, so I'll forward that email to you, we declined your services, it's not to Health and Welfare, but it is to the company, just saying we're not moving forward with this.
Okay. And did we get any response from them, like, oh, let us know down the road? You know, usually they don't like that, or send them back. Yeah, you can send me that whole thread, that'd be awesome, thank you.
Did you say that was through Panhandle Health or the department?
Uh, Department of Health and Welfare.
Okay.
Yep. It's a, um, if I'm not mistaken, it's a Planned Parenthood curriculum.
Okay.
That the Department of Health and Welfare is in various states, um.
Yeah, when we met with them, they talked about the fact that their curriculum focuses on abstinence, but then when we did our own kind of checking, there were, there were, um, a lot of, um, concerns about some things, and they actually, the company, not Panhandle Health, but the company that writes that curriculum, admitted that those things are in there. So we, as soon as we saw that, we just said, we're not even taking this to the board.
Yeah, I didn't think, I didn't remember, like, there's, you know, people do records requests and ask, they're being told, um, and it, you know, comes back on us. Um, the other thing that just for whatever reason, I don't know why, but those vans, how many passenger were those vans? Were they thirteen or fifteen?
They were fourteen, and then the drivers, fifteen. They, they had to be fifteen total people on the van.
Okay. And did we determine there was no class B for that, or class A, or yes, there is?
There is not. Just a regular driver's license is all that's needed. Because we're fourteen passenger with the driver.
Yeah, the rule from the Department of Transportation is sixteen is the, when you need a C D L.
Right, yeah, I, and I'm familiar with that, but, um, can we check the statute on transportation? If people make sure that we're within the guideline?
So you're thinking there's a different class?
Yeah, for any, any time of transportation students. I just want to make sure.
Yep, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because, yeah, I was aware of that from just regular, you know, chauffeuring people or whatever, but.
Yeah, when I reached out to ICRAM, I, I did ask if there was anything that we needed to know that, as we were moving down this, and they didn't mention anything about it in particular, but I will follow up.
Anything for that?
Um, I, I do know.
On that, if there's.
Move approval, concern.
Second. Having a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing that the motion carries. Moving on to old business, we have the superintendent's follow-up. Thank you for getting, uh, information on, from ICRAM.
You're welcome. And that's a nice, um, relationship to have with this, uh, Mr. Randström, because he is very quick. Um, I'm going to have his email, I can, uh, email him, and he is very quick to get back to me.
Good.
It took a little bit of time to get there, but here we go.
And then the clarification that the unappropriated funds and the planned balance are one in the same.
Mm-hmm.
With the letter regarding, um, the, um.
In support of the suit?
Yeah, well, no, just in contention with what the tax, accounting tax assessors doing, uh, or treasurer. Um, is that going to happen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, with the, with the two fail times, um, we've just struggled to find time, and all three of us couldn't get together to do it.
Okay. Any other comments or input on the follow-up?
Thank you. Appreciate the information.
Yes.
I was glad to see that they figured out the reason for the increased super cost that mountain view.
Yeah.
And Mike said that was actually really hard to find because it was under the foundation of the building.
For that?
Yeah, so, yeah. And we're just persistent.
The next is the, um, administrative recommendation on the science curriculum adoption. It does appear that we need to purchase the kits.
Only once.
While there's upgrades. But my question would be why on some of these are the upgrades more than the actual kit?
It's because the, the kits are bigger. Um, so I talked to the company, so the original quote, um, included the first round of the kits.
Right.
And so in her original, when we first talked about it, I said, what is likelihood that we'd have to buy a second kit? And she said, most districts don't, because, like, let's just sit, take fifth grade, for instance, there's so many science experiments that you don't, you just don't get through everything, and then they buffer enough for the first, um, first two to sometimes three years. She said, so if you are going to replace, it will be like the salt, or maybe that it, it's not the whole hard pieces of it, it's just kind of the consumable, it's not the hardware. And so she said, more often than not, people don't do the refill kit. So she gave us a quote with the refill kit on the quote, but she really recommended not going that route, because we could replace the consumables, and we don't have to replace the hardware. Their, the quote, the final quote with refills is replacing the entire kit with all the hardware. They don't just do the consumable piece, so the recommendation would be to go with the original quote. And then if in year four and five, we needed some, to replenish some of that consumable, we already do that now with our current science kits, and we have a whole process for it, and so we would just incorporate those into that process. So we're really replacing, like, the salt, or the vegetable oil, or some of that consumable stuff if it gets spilled or they run out, so. But they put so much in the kits that she said it's, you can't, one, get through all of them, it's just a lot, and then, two, they put so much supply in there, so.
We definitely don't want to spend taxpayer dollars to buy all of those kits again and get twenty more scales and twenty more thermometers and those kinds of things. We don't need to replace, it's just really the consumable materials. And we do have a mechanism in that budget to take care of that.
That's a half million dollar sign up relief.
Yeah, it is. I just, I was shocked, and I didn't understand why our discount went down with the larger.
I had the same question, so. And I, and I feel like some of, like, to your point, some of the, some of the, um, refills are different. I just think she tried to embed some of the, maybe the discounts inside, but I get, it's, I mean, the recommendation is we should just go with the original quote, and then we will stay on top of, I mean, that'll be something we check every single year, of just what, you know, are we running out? But, um, it sounds like that's really not an issue, and it, it could be in year four or five, but it would just be the consumable, so.
Okay.
And just back to that second step, I did send you guys the email, so just so that you know context, um, uh, the counselor from Mountain View requested that we send IDs with the, the leads that are running this program, because we didn't know anything about it. So we met with them after school one day for a couple of hours, and they gave us this whole, this is what it is. So in that, we just said, well, this is our process, we have to take it to the board, they have to approve it. If we look at it and feel like we're going to take it to the board because this is in alignment with what, um, our practices are, then we'll take it to the board meeting, and then we'll follow up with you. So she titles her response, so it's in your email, you know, the board meeting, but we never brought it to you because it was definitely, there were some questionable when we dug a little bit deeper, and we asked for a lot of links and to get more information. It was not something that we felt comfortable bringing to the board. So then you have my response back to her of thank you, but no thank you, so that's the context of that thread.
Okay, thank you.
So it never actually came to us, just an executive decision that it was probably, no, go, it's not appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question about that?
Maybe.
Um, we did make the executive session not to bring it to you, just because there are so many things on our agendas, and they're long, um, not with the intention of acting in place of the board, but just knowing kind of what the board's, um, desire is, what the kinds of curriculum putting in front of kids, and this did not meet that. Would you prefer that we bring all of those things and let the board make those decisions? I guess when we bring them, I feel like you think we're recommending, which is why we didn't bring it, because we could not recommend it.
Yeah, if you can't recommend it, uh.
Yeah, I don't want to see it, yeah.
I'm not seeing it real this time.
Okay, I just don't want you to feel like we're acting in lieu of the board. We, we just couldn't recommend it to you.
There's a process to bring curriculum into the district, so if it doesn't follow that process, it shouldn't ever get to us.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
Okay. Um, on that note, we do need to, we need to take action on item K two, even though it doesn't state that it's an action item.
I have moved to approve administration's recommendation for the science curriculum adoption.
Okay. Having a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All in favor, one opposed? Motion passes. Did you wish to have further conversations on the curriculum?
Yeah, I'm kind of getting sick of that curriculum.
Okay.
I just, I felt like we can write our own curriculum.
Oh, okay.
This district.
Okay.
I'm just, there's, there's schools that do it.
I know, I just, it's a full time job.
I know, but they hire two people to write curriculum, it's two hundred thousand dollars, and then they sell it.
Right.
And they give it to other schools, and they're sharing, and they're doing all kinds of stuff, they could save money.
Okay.
You know, some to look at.
I agree.
So, right, a million dollar worth of curriculum every, about six years? Is that what it is?
It, yeah.
Average, then you're saving money, I mean, tons of money.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, just something I was thinking about.
Yeah, you should have brought that to us. Yes.
David?
Well, I've been trying to talk to people, now that it, it seems like I did.
We're the people.
Pushed.
We're the people.
We're it.
Yeah, we're it, we're the people. This is where the decision gets made, because you guys have to decide if we were going to post that decision.
I just think it's a good idea, I mean, if we want, you know, like, you brought on security guards, nobody else did that, why can't we do this?
Right.
You know? Just something that's kind of, I mean.
Yeah, I wish you would have spoke up, I mean, we're, yeah, trustee Baines, right, we are the people.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do think that's a great idea.
I mean, two teachers, there's a school in, I don't know where it was, Krampy or something like that, they hired two curriculum writers for two hundred thousand dollars, which is less than a million.
Correct.
And, and started writing their own curriculum, and started sharing it, and, you know, that's, but there's a ton of stuff online too, you can get for free.
Yeah, well, part of the online stuff, problem with that is that, um, the teachers need a teacher's edition of something, so that they have, like, a whole student sequence and something that sort of walks them through the lesson and they can refer to, but, you know, there might be subjects you can just start off with, that would be, you know, something that's not so in-depth, like math, or science, or something like that.
Well, how hard is it to write second grade math, or first grade math?
Well, it depends on who you talk to.
You're hired. So you're free, you're hired to free.
Sweet.
Yeah, that's true savings.
I think that's a, a great idea.
Yeah.
It is, you know.
Just something to look into.
Yeah, right.
At least that.
It may be something that we can, um, start taking proactive steps to getting to that point, because we have more curriculum that we have to get researched, you know, implemented, approved, or not. So that might be something definitely worth, um, taking a deeper dive into.
I guess my part, my point in, I mean, obviously we need curriculum, but trying to alleviate the burden. The teachers carry a huge burden when there's no curriculum, going and getting your free stuff online.
Right.
And then there's no consistency throughout the district. So if a student leaves John Brown and goes to Apple, or goes here, then, you know, so that was part of my push was to alleviate that, so that, number one, the teachers can teach, and they're not, you know, uh, doing the teachers pay teachers and trying to copy or hunt down stuff, and then they have to write lesson plans to top of it, because there's nothing. And then they have to, on the lesson plan, now they have to go prove what standard. Whereas in the curriculum, the standard's there, the, the lesson plans, e- everything's there, it's just a matter of opening the book. But I don't think it's impossible, you know, and there might be things that we can, um, start with, you know, to look at.
Another out-of-the-box kind of idea is, um, there, there's a lot of interest from, uh, parents and community members for the Hillsdale College curriculum.
There is.
But you have to, and, and the curriculum is free, but you have to be approved by them, and we have to be willing to adhere to some of their, uh, especially around behaviors, some of the things that you have to teach too. So, um, if we're looking at ways to not be paying a million dollars a year for curriculum, that's another path that we could definitely kind of start to move down.
Okay.
Didn't we look at that, though, didn't you? Didn't we look at that though, didn't you, and we looked at?
We were trying to look at just like, just the ELA curriculum, but you can't do it that way. Um, because you actually have to be approved by them to be able to teach the curriculum. And so we couldn't even look at the curriculum. You have to go through the process of the approval. And it's, I don't know that you can get approved just to teach one content area. I think you have to be, if you could have a school that's approved, and then they have access to all of their curriculum for that school, but then it's different than everybody else, or we get approved as a district, or we get approved as a K five. And there are lots of, um, different, uh, options that we could look at, which would definitely save.
That may be worth.
Taxpayer dollars.
It's time for that.
Well, this time, you put in, uh, parents put in the reading curriculum. Checking it out, make sure there's nothing in there. We're writing our own, we don't have to worry about that as much.
If you use the Hills, the problem with, I agree with you that if we hired the right person, then you could write curriculum. But it's, um, you still have, I mean, they have, there has to be all that vertical alignment. So it's not as easy as just saying, I'm gonna sit down and write the second grade curriculum and then Ramona writes the third grade curriculum. Because there has to, it has to, but with the Hillsdale, if the curriculum is free, once we are approved by them and we have access to all of their stuff. And what I like about their ELAs, kids are actually reading historical documents like the Constitution of the United States and Declaration of Independence, and they're being critical thinkers and consumers of that. So, um, I, it's just another way to kind of get to, I think, where you're trying to go, which is let's not spend so much taxpayer dollars on curriculum.
I did speak to them, and they, I got away to the point where they wanted to speak directly to the superintendent. And they were willing to spend all the time necessary.
If the board is okay with me walking down, I, down, because it's a commitment, the board's gotta be willing to say, we wanna be a Hillsdale College district or K five group or whatever. Um, I didn't wanna do that without the board being willing to at least look at that.
Well, we have to have a lot of information maybe.
But yeah, that's what. What information can we gather?
So are you okay if I start?
Up to that, yeah.
Like these people?
Yeah, up to that point, I think so. It works definitely.
Right down to the new, new school.
Yeah, I thought we already said that, and it came back saying that it was too lengthy and too costly to go down that. But we thought that maybe we could get one school approved and then look out from that. I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm open to it either way.
Okay.
All right, moving on to the new business, um, action items. We have the supple- supplemental curriculum. Uh, we have the list of tabled books, and we also have the new supplemental resources. I did speak with Dr. Pasley on the comments that were provided, uh, from the librarians on the table books. I was, um, not appreciative of some of the commentation that was given by the librarians. Well, by a librarian. And, um, I think that we had asked for patron input. We want our families to feel like they can provide honest and fair critique. And I don't think it's appropriate for another person to say, well, your critique's wrong. Um, I just, I don't agree with that. I think everyone's entitled to their own opinion, and we lay it out on the table, and then we make the decision. So, um.
Yeah, we're not asking them to review other people's comments.
No, we are not.
To review the book.
Correct. With that being said, um, there were a few books that, um, on the table list that I was a little cautioned by, even though the librarians were saying they think they're appropriated. Mostly, uh, the book of animal poetry, the comment about the fact that, you know, there is a section of a poem and you actually need the whole poem to understand the content of the purpose of what's being provided in that one book. Then I, I question, well, what's the value? If you need the whole poem, why are you not being given the whole poem? The, um, the books that are limited by just eleventh and twelfth grade, you know, if they're going into the high school library, then I don't think they should, if they're being that, um, limited. And then, uh, so I didn't know if anybody had any other comments. I really didn't like, I don't think we should approve. Well, I'm not going to approve, we set the tar on fire, um, just because it is highly controversial. So I don't know if anybody else has any other input from the comments the librarians have provided. Nothing? Okay. Do you have any input on the second, uh?
No.
The tabled books? Okay. Um, Bob, did you have any comment on the table books?
Okay.
Moving on to the supplemental resources, um. I think the comments came up, they did not. Okay. I'm a little concerned, um, confused maybe. It seems like, uh, TLE is wanting a curriculum that's outside the scope of their, um.
So this is, uh, specific to the ALP classes, so it's all the advanced. So that's why she's wanting more project-based, um, the advanced kids. So it's for her advanced program. So this isn't for classroom use? It, it, classroom use for her classroom, not, um, a typical classroom or A level?
Okay. Um.
So she has fifth graders that are at the eighth or ninth grade level. She has fourth graders that are at the seventh or eighth grade in their concept and acquisition. So she's trying to have a wide range of, um, difficulty to challenge. So that's why it's all at the higher end and above grade level.
Okay, this editopia is just a blog comment. So what are we approving? Or what is wanting to be approved, I guess? There's no curriculum there, it's just.
It's an article, then she wants the article approved.
But it's an article for her.
But it's for the, for, it's for the teacher. Maybe she changed it, it was an article that she wanted read, so we don't have to, maybe somehow she changed the link on me.
Yeah, it's just, um.
It was an article specific to, about advancement and.
It's how to refine driving questions for effective project-based learning.
Yeah, I feel like it was a different one, but.
Yeah, and I found, um, some of the rewriting last week's poorly written questions humorous. So quite a stretch on how we got from one to the other. Okay. I'm sorry, I just have to say this. How does probability relate to games? That is a fair question, I think, to present to children. How do we create a new gambling game to cheat people out of their money without them noticing?
That's a question?
That's the question they want you to, to re, you know, they're, you're taking the one and recreating it to this. No.
No.
That's ridiculous. Yeah, this is poorly, I mean, hmm, no. Not appropriate. At least I am not, I don't know what y'all are doing. Yeah, maybe when, um, this comes to the board, if we can have a little context, because I was like, all these parents were like, what are we doing? And I was like, yeah, what are we doing?
But when it's an ALP, or something like that, typically you gotta test that PD here or something else.
Oh. Um, and then I didn't know, 'cause there were some links that appeared to be already in her drive. Sorry, are we already using it?
She has them and wants to, so it could've been a free download. And I told her she can't use the A minute until it's approved.
Okay.
Or somebody from another, they share a lot, so we went through a bit of training. So it could've been given to her and.
Anybody have any other comments or? Any comments or conversation on the curriculum? Go for it.
Hmm, I don't.
But I think Ramona's still looking. Corporusing.
Yeah, I'm a point.
Your turn.
Yeah.
New Y try come to us already, or it's.
Oh, the Y try?
Yeah.
We approved Y try at the, at Mountain View. And, and it's been used since I was at Betty Kiefer as a principal at the elementary level, but this board hasn't approved it, so that's why it's there.
So it's approved at Mountain View, and then the question was, do we approve it for the high school? And then because it was approved, elementary, 'cause they have used it way back when, before second step was ever a thing. Um, they asked, and I, we just said, it wasn't one of those that was grandfathered in on our list. So if we were going to, 'cause you guys were really clear, um, about how it was gonna be used, Y tries. And we said we would have to bring it back here. If it was, if any parts of it from the elementary would be used, you guys would have to locate it, which is why it's back.
We seem to be approving a lot of, um, random, and I, I use that word cautiously, um, curriculum for the elementary counselors. And at least from my perspective, without an understanding of what they're actually doing at the schools. Um, because I was under the impression they were there with respect to bullying and, um, the other.
And those are the parts of Y try that they use.
Okay, but then, but we have the other curriculum. So I mean, why do we need all of this curriculum about, I, I guess I don't understand what we're doing.
Sometimes they're, you know, they'll supplement, because this, for first grade, the lesson in Y try can be better than the lesson in second step, or they've already done it, they wanna do a follow-up. It just gives them a wider range to be able to address the same topic. So it's literally not the same exact, if there's a worksheet attached to it, that kind of a thing. So they have a couple of resources to pull from, specific to those topics that they cover. Kind of Y try has friendship stuff, so they'll talk about, you know, how to play a game and the sheet. And so it just gives them some additional ideas.
Okay.
The kid's not getting it one way, they'll try it a different way.
How much time do our counselors at the elementary level spend with our elementary kids in classes?
Uh, they do, uh, thirty minutes a week per grade level, or per classroom, sorry.
Curriculum-based?
Mm-hmm, they go in and teach a lesson.
A lesson from?
From what you can stem or what you approve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, what would that Y try be categorized as? I mean, is it health, is it mental wellness? I mean, what is? 'Cause I'm trying to find it on our approved, and I know we had a, a conversation about, um, Mountain View.
Mm-hmm, it was approved for Mountain View.
Yeah, that's what I don't remember.
I wanna say it was two board meetings ago.
It's, um, it's not listed.
Three. It could've been one of the three.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, it's not listed, no, approved?
No.
She's looking at the board-approved curriculum list.
I think it's all powered.
Okay. Any further comments or discussions?
No.
Okay. All right, then I would move to approve on the table books from two thirteen. The book Last Stop on Market Street. The book Martina and the Beautiful Cockroach. Legend. And that's it, with the others being denied.
Did you make three?
I don't remember.
Uh, Last Stop. Martina. And Legend.
Yeah, Martina.
And Legend?
Mm-hmm, Legend, yes.
That's it. That's true.
Yeah.
Sugar. Having a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
More in favor, one opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the supplemental resources. I'll entertain motion at this time. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So I guess, I mean, I don't have any problem with all those that say no problem, no issue, no concern. But there are a few of them that I would like a little bit better understanding, because, you know, even going to the site and looking at some of them, I still have questions, so, um. Trying to see how many there are. So my recommendation would be, my motion, uh, my recommendation, my motion would be that we approve all of those that have, you know, the one through six or four, however, where there's.
A unanimous no concern?
Yeah, yeah, unanimous no concern, yeah. And the others, like, we'll just have to table for now or figure out what's going on with some of those.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Having a motion in second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to board policy, uh, thirty-two eighty-one. You were all provided with the draft of policy thirty-two eighty-one from the policy committee. Um, the reason you've received the draft with no strikeouts or anything is because it's a brand-new policy to our district. And then you were also provided with the stakeholder input because the policy was created, sent out to everyone, and then information was brought back to us, or to the committee. Any comments or discussion on the policy?
Yes.
Yes to comments and discussion?
First of all, I, you know, I applaud the policy committee for taking the issues on and trying to develop a policy that reinforces our desire to have our core mission of teaching academics first and foremost, and that we avoid some of the other issues that tend to come in. Having said that, I do have a little bit of concern with the policy as written. The concern, I guess, well, a couple of things. Part which is not very heavy. You ta- in each of the paragraphs kind of leading in, it, you know, it talks about the district shall not discuss, address, or educate children about. And I guess the concern there is, is the word discuss. I, I tend to think, having been in a classroom and working around kids for a long, long time, that, you know, it, it could be an awkward situation for both staff, teacher, particularly teacher-staff, and students. When an issue may come up, or a comment may come up, or a student may seek someone out to get some comfort or idea of how to deal with an issue that they may have. And we're kind of saying, you know, if a student comes to me as a social studies teacher and says I wanna talk about X, Y, Z, and I have to respond, I'm sorry, I can't talk about that. That's a, that's a real turn off, a real negative as far as trying to help report with kids and and help them deal with whatever problems they may be encountering. I don't think that, you know, we should be teaching that stuff. I don't think that, you know, it's our, our business or our job to in, in any way provide instruction or, or necessarily advice or anything else in that regard. But I do know that part of having conversations being a good listener. And teachers have to be good listeners, counselors have to be good listeners. And I hate to create a situation where we take that away from out of respect both to the student and to the teacher or counselor or whichever it may be. We do have, I think, some policy that indicates in other areas that maybe the best course of action that a teacher is presented with something of that sort, that they refer it to a counselor.
Right.
Or refer it to an administrator.
And that's what, we, we did have that discussion, um, those in the committee, and that's what would be part of the procedural thing, because it, I mean, inevitably something's gonna come up.
Sure.
Right? So, and that was, um, you know, from either the comments or the discussions at the policy committee, that I think the majority of them just wanted to make sure that the student would be redirected to parent, unless there was some other issue that the teacher was aware of, that that would not be safe for the student.
Exactly.
You know?
And those situations unfortunately do arise. So, well, I, I didn't see that anywhere in here, and so that's why I'm raising the issue, I guess.
So for the policy, then, is there a better word, or do you think the procedure would? Because I know that we've done that with others, that procedure would clean up. You know, like you're saying, okay, so when this happens, what do we do? And that's sort of a procedural thing, you know, this is how that would be handled.
I, I think that's important guidance for staff.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Similar to when students disclose that they're being, there's something happening at home, they disclose that to the teacher, the teacher then immediately reports it either to counselor or the principal, and then the principal and counselor deal with it. That, I think the procedure could be similar to that.
Yep.
The only other question I have is, given the sensitivity of this whole arena, would it be prudent to ask some legal counsel advice about this policy?
Well, the policy was actually prepared by ISBA. However, we took, um, the majority of their perspectives within this policy and wrote it for our district. I guess we could run it by legal counsel. Is that what you would like us to do?
Well, that's what I'm suggesting. You know, it's, it's an arena that is wrought with potential for legal issues to be raised.
Okay.
And if we can be proactive in preventing or heading off, you know, that kind of thing.
Oh, I hear you.
Yeah.
I hear you.
And I think Amy White did address quite a bit of that when we were at the, um, at the convention down there, because this did come up, because part of the other thing is that the majority of people don't understand that all the Title IX things that are enforced do not apply in state Idaho and thirteen other states, or thirteen states collectively. So they're redlined out of there, and that's what people keep coming back to, but, um, and she did address that with the few, with the few other things, and then what, what Governor Little, um, just passed along with the, the House, and then, um, you know, it comes, it falls right in line with that, too.
Right.
You know?
The language we did use was from statute.
But then layered on top of that, we have the most recent announcement from the Fed about some of this stuff.
Yeah, which I think will probably still go within the, within the other, uh, it's pretty much the same thing as the existing lawsuit where they have a, um, I can't think of the word right now, when it's not being enforced, they have a injunction, yeah, something like that, yeah. And that actually, that document is right on the State Department of Education's website, the Title IX document. Anybody can look up and see in the gutter of the document. And it's also on the, uh, the federal side, too, that none of those changes apply to the state of Idaho.
With respect to the statement that's within all of these definitions, the district's position of discussing, addressing, and educating children, would you like that reworded? Because the, the intentionality within this policy is that no district staff should be going there to create an educational platform with its kiddos.
Yeah, and I think we're in agreement on that. It's, it's morally kind of the opposite when a student approaches a staff member. They get forced into a position of saying, this is hands-off, I can't. So, you know, and that, it goes to the word discuss, I think.
Okay.
Once again, discuss being conversation.
Right.
Part of conversation is being able to listen. I, I just don't feel comfortable putting a staff member in a position of telling a student, oh, you can't talk to me about that.
Well, we wouldn't expect them to do that, but we would expect them to tell them to read, it's a redirection.
Right.
You know, that you need to go speak with your parents about this, or, or what have you, whatever the, um, because what we don't want either is to end up with the scenario like we had at the high school where some third party came in and just took it upon themselves to start teaching the students their alternative lifestyle.
Which would be out of order.
Right, right, you know, so there's. But yeah, so we need another word besides the discuss, or?
Maybe classroom discussion? That clarifies that we're not gonna have a classroom discussion.
Well, I don't, there's, I think that, I think that, from what I'm understanding from the parents and the community, is not just classroom discussion, there should be no discussion with any other adult, with the child on this topic except for the parent. Unless there's some known abusive home thing, or, you know, what, whatever, but that was, again, just because of the other school districts surrounding us that have already, you know.
So our, our current practice is if a kiddo were to, if I was a classroom teacher and a kiddo came up to me and said to me, I, um, I identify as a boy, and I want you to call me Johnny instead of Jamie or Janelle. My response to that kiddo would be, um, um, I will talk to the principal and we will schedule a meeting. I mean, that should really make, and this is the abridged version, um, with your parents so that we can put a plan together to best support you. So then, parents are notified, and the student, the counselor, the principal, and the parents sit down together, and they talk about the student's request. And then if the parents say, I'm not okay with that, I'm not in support of that, the parent directs the staff, then this is how I'm gonna handle this. That's what our current practice is, and we've been doing it that way for a long time. To give the parents, again, the parents the right to make the decision about how they want their kiddo to move forward. So we're not shutting the conversation down, but we're listening to the kiddo and then directing them to, to, I think so, if we had the procedure in place, you might feel a little bit better about what that looks like, so that we get to the end result, which is, we want the parents to be part of the conversation. We do have parents who, when we've had those meetings, has said, I am supportive of this, my child's desire, and so you do need to call her Johnny. But ultimately, that's parents.
Don't you violate somebody's constitutional right to not call them that if they don't want to?
I, that's a legal question, I don't know the answer to that.
What do you mean?
You can't make me? Call you whatever you want. You can't, you can't tell me to, you can't tell a teacher you have to call her this or that.
Compelled speech.
Yeah.
Right. But I think what Lisa's trying to say is if the teacher's on board with calling Suzie Johnny, and the parents are on board with the teacher calling Suzie Johnny, and Suzie wants to be called Johnny.
You can't make people.
Correct.
Say something they're against.
Right, but if the teacher's like, ah, I don't think so, that's Suzie, and Suzie comes dressed as Suzie every single day. I mean, what I want is to protect the teachers from parents.
Right.
I think they have the right to come after them because, you know, they're, they're not doing it the right way.
The, my, my only concern about shutting down the conversation is there have been times when the parents only know that the kiddos are thinking about this because it's come to the school.
Right.
And then we have the conversation with the parents, and that's the first that the parents know about it. So it opens the door for the kids to be able to have the conversation with the parents, and then the parents can direct the conversation, so, um, oftentimes that, that's who they feel most comfortable with, is there is a teacher that they feel like they can talk to, so.
So, what would you like to do on the policy?
Well, as Superintendent suggested, you know, talking about not having discussion in, in a classroom, say, is perfectly legitimate, I think, because that's consistent with our basic premise, and that is that we stick to academics and we don't get into other topics. Well, a one-to-one basis, you know, I think that's a different situation. And, you know, we do have some language in here about following district protocols, but of course it doesn't spell those out. But part of my concern is, you know, is as you, as you're reading through the myriad of comments that the parents and patrons made, you know, you, again, if you're listening, you hear some folks saying, please respect my child or my student, even if what they're wanting is not consistent with what we want or somebody else wants. And so we have to be able to establish that respect platform somehow or another. And, and make sure that that gets communicated, because what's happening, I think, is people read this policy, and it's pretty black and white. My intention, I'm sure, uh, but it, it doesn't allow for any nuance of any sort, and consequently, people come away, I think, offended in some respects.
I agree, but we're gonna offend people on one side or the other.
Uh, yeah, and that's, you know, that's not our goal, I think, to, to.
But I think we champion on the base of offending people. But I do believe our parents want to know that their children are safe and protected when they're at school.
And respectful.
Well, yes.
How to get that appropriate balance is the struggle.
How would you recommend we do it?
Well, partly I would, I would accept the suggestion that was made. Maybe the word discuss be changed to classroom discussion, or something of that sort. The other thing that I'm not finding right now, I had a printed copy of this, I don't know if it was from earlier, there was some, some language in it about calling students by their first and last name only, you know, that sort of thing. Is that no longer in here?
No, it is not. It was removed.
Okay. Because that was a concerning area to us, yeah.
No, it was removed, based off of the.
Okay, fine. No, we did read all six hundred and fifty of them. We do it every, and it took three meetings to get through, I think it was three, maybe two, two or three. So it's not like they, you know, ask everybody at the table, there's a, you know. So it's not like they, you know, ask everybody at the table, there's, you know, we try to change things, and there's tons of input, you know, as much as we can to consider what's being said within the context of the policy. I think the hard thing is, is like you're saying, is it's, it's such an emotionally charged issue, and trying to write it with no emotion is gonna be offensive to begin with. I mean, it's legalese, right, if I mean, but trying also to take into consideration everybody, but trying to stay focused that, you know, we just wanna teach kids.
It's hard, I know.
You know, we just wanna teach, it's all.
If discuss and address were removed, and it just read, um, where am I at, uh, "The district's position that educating children about gender identity is the responsibility of the child's parent, custodian, or legal guardian," would that accommodate the concern that if a student came to a teacher, the teacher couldn't provide an empathetic ear and listen?
Uh, yeah, number one, maybe, let's think about that a little bit.
Okay. Well, if the whole premise is that we're not educating children about all of this.
Right.
Then I think we should clearly identify that within this policy.
Yeah.
Because if we'd removed the discussing and addressing, you know, I would hope that if a student came forward and needed to talk to a teacher, that they felt comfortable confiding in, that that teacher would then redirect, because it's not a platform for the teacher to get on, and she had to be in one way or the other with this kiddo, who needs to redirect to the appropriate people, which is the child's parents.
I do think procedure around that would be very helpful, so that teachers know. Um, I, I do believe there's language in there that says that if teachers notice a change in a child, that we're gonna notify the parents.
Right.
And, because I think that's really what parents are looking for, they don't want us at school to be having conversations about these kinds of things without parents knowing about them. So, if, I think, if you could take the discuss part out, but then, and then have an accompanying procedure, so that if a child were to have a conversation with the teacher privately about something that relates to this gender identity, sexual orientation, these are the steps that we're gonna take, so that the parents are clear as to what they can expect from us.
Okay.
I think that's important.
Yeah, and that, that really goes back to, you know, being aware and accepting a parent's response to, you know.
Right, it puts the parents in the driver's seat, which is what they're asking for.
Right. And the confidentiality language came from the statute. Well, this is an actionable item.
I know that we talked, I know that Trustee Jones talked about not allowing classroom discussion, but one-on-one conversations are okay, and I don't know that I am comfortable with a one-on-one conversation. I know that a lot of our parents are concerned about their kids being taught something that they don't know about. I don't know that I am entirely comfortable with a one-on-one conversation, allowing one-on-one conversation either.
Okay.
And maybe that's the word we need to use is con- converse instead of discuss, well, but discuss is the length of the thing, um, maybe converse is more to the point.
Well, and maybe in the paragraph where we suggest that district protocols be followed, there could be an added reference to what those protocols are, or where to find them, or something of that sort.
Yeah, it should definitely be cross-referenced.
Right.
Because sometimes, sometimes, they, teachers find things out not because the kids have had a conversation with them, but because they've written something in, in, like, German.
An assignment or something.
Yeah, and, um, and it doesn't matter if it's verbal or written, if they are noting that there's a change, if the kids are talking about some sort of a change, then this compels us to have that conversation with parents. But, but my preference would be that, that gets referred to the counselor and the principal, and so that there's a, a meeting scheduled and the parents are immediately notified and there's a conversation.
Right.
Just so, kind of, I guess, in my mind, it, it, it's like the, uh, our policy around, um, children disclosing, uh, things about, um, abuse at home.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the, I would want the protocol to be written in such a way that the teacher can feel like I've handed off this responsibility and somebody is going to ensure that the parents are part of this conversation at a level that's a little bit higher than my classroom. So, um, if, if the protocol's written in that way, then they're immediately notified that this conversation came up today and we wanna have a conversation with you and make sure you're aware, and then if the child is making a request of some sort, which happens more at the high school, obviously, the parents are part of that conversation and they get to say, "No, no, we're not doing that." Sometimes they say yes, but oftentimes they, their preferences, "No, we're gonna, we aren't gonna do that, and we'll have a conversation at home."
Is that, uh, protocol already existent in, um, the admin handbook?
I think it's actually kind of embedded in the policy around, um, that, where if a teacher is notified that they, "We have twenty-four hours to report," and it goes to the principal and the counselor, and they're the ones who make the report. I would use that same kind of language. That way it's consistent for the teachers.
Yeah, that's pretty important, man. I, one of the comments, one of the listed comments that were made was from a teacher, I have no idea who the teacher was, but they indicated they, they have and know the protocols in, in other situations, but they couldn't figure out what the protocol would be in this situation. So we need to help them with that, I think.
Right, that's why I said if there's a, if we could slip the admin protocol in there, you know, and here you go, this is, um.
And this policy actually takes huge weight off of our principals' shoulders. They, they have struggled with, without having a policy, they've struggled to make sure that they're doing what the parents want, but also not violating some law that they don't know about with regard to, do students have rights to confidentiality when they're talking about these things? Um, so this clearly identifies moving forward, how we're gonna handle it, which they appreciate.
And there again, you know, that's a, a cause for making, maybe seeking legal advice a little deeper than we normally would, you know, for policy.
I have a question too, that, um, when we say that we would refer them to the counselor, what's the credentials of the counselors to handle something like that? I mean.
In this case, I would refer them to the principal. Our policy for, like, CPS referrals, that typically go to counselors.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay. Just 'cause I did share that email with you about the counselor, and what are they doing, kind of think, yeah.
Yeah.
It made me think of that, all right, yeah, that makes sense, that would be, sort of, to the top.
Because the principal's gonna be the one that's gonna reach out to the parent and ask if they could come in and have a meeting.
Right.
So by doing that, we would be consistent with other situations?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that, yeah, that consistency is important, yeah.
Yeah, and then you don't have to say, "Okay, this type of situation, this is..."
Yeah, yeah.
Remembering which protocol belongs with which, it's more consistent.
Oh, well, it did say that in there. "Building administration shall follow district protocols when addressing..."
Mm-hmm.
Oh, doesn't say that in the event. Yeah, so it does say that they should follow the district protocols for, so are they not clear on what those protocols are for the same thing, any kind of mental or emotional or physical or well-being, when addressing, you know, even self-harm, self-mutilation, suicidal ideation, or changes in identity, et cetera?
They definitely know the protocols for self-harm, and they know the protocols for if somebody comes and discloses that something's happening to them at home. Um, I, so we just, if that's the same protocol, then that, then that becomes, um.
Okay. That is on your confidentiality in this, in this policy.
Yeah, so those protocols are well-known, so.
Okay.
The only difference, I guess, would be, again, um, when we're talking about CPS, oftentimes it's the counselor that makes the CPS referral.
Mm-hmm.
We wouldn't have, in this situation, you wouldn't go to the counselor, you'd go directly to the principal, so that might be just a little bit of a tweak.
Yeah, is there a, I think, I saw a flowchart somewhere when upon a time.
That was for suicidal ideation, and what to do during.
Okay, if then, okay.
If it happens during school hours.
Okay.
If it happens, if you get notified outside of school hours, they also have to, with phone numbers and things embedded, for people to be able to get in touch with, right, or something.
So what would we like to do with the policy? Okay. You can do that policy, huh?
Hmm?
I mean, I, it's an actionable item, so I don't know what we're doing with it. I know what I would do with it, but we're all voiced concerns, so.
Well, I think until we have, I think until we have a procedure, we can.
Sure we can.
Well, then you can make the motion.
Well, not making a motion. Okay, then I move to approve policy thirty-two eighty-one, um, with, uh, the correction of removing, um, discussing and educating off of the definitions as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. I'll entertain another motion, unless someone wants to.
I move to tables, I move to table it until we have a procedure in place for staff guidance.
I would second with an amendment, that we also ask our legal counsel for review.
Yep.
Okay. Also, I would say.
Okay, one motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails.
I would.
Where would we like to go from here?
Well, I would move that we approve thirty-two eighty-one as presented, um, with the understanding that we need to, what we've done with other policies, we need to create a procedure or take an existing procedure and tie it to this policy, and also ask, um, for counsel's opinion on the policy. So approve the policy as is, with the understanding we have to provide a procedure soon, and also ask, uh, counsel for their opinion on, on this final.
I'll second that with the modification of the procedure be, um, prepared within three weeks.
Yeah, I'll, I'll accept that.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
For Chair Johnson. Uh, will the board clerk be the one to submit the, um, policy to legal counsel? Do you want me to do that? Do you want to do that?
Um, yeah. But why don't you give it to Amy White? I'll ask you to do that, please. Permit me.
And I can do that ahead of the procedure?
Mm-hmm. Yes, please. And then if, um, you or whoever you should choose could provide, um, the clerk with the protocols, but can be brought to policy committee.
Sure thing.
So that we can get that wrapped up and relevant. Moving on to the, um, vape detector use. We have a request to install the vape detector detectors in our secondary schools, um, and this is bringing brought forward because the parent survey was strongly in favor of implementing this. Um, currently, there is only eleven thousand dollars of grant funding that's been secured. So I don't know where that lies.
Well, they're, so, uh, they're continuing to look for grants to, um, write. These grants have been approved because there was a deadline to submit, and they wanted to make sure they, they got there.
Okay.
Even though, so they are definitely ahead of the board.
Okay.
Um, but we, we accepted them with the understanding that if the board chose not to provide, um, authority to do this, then we'll just, uh, return the monies, so.
Okay.
So, uh, they have, so they've secured two separate grants, one for five thousand, one for six thousand specifically for vape detectors, and, um, they're continuing to look for those, and will continue, uh, if the board approves, then we'll move forward. And they recognize that there won't be district money spent on this, so the detectors will be installed as grants are received.
Okay.
And this is just in our high schools?
And middle schools, secondary schools.
And middle, okay.
We had ninety-one percent of the parents in that survey said yes, and there was a, like, seven hundred, I'd have to go back and look, but it was a high number of participation. Yeah.
To approve.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Four in favor, one opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the metal detecting wand use.
This again had a higher rate of approval from the parents, eighty-four percent said yes. I would, um, s- recommend to the board that, uh, if you choose to approve this, that the approval language, um... I would, um, recommend to the board that, uh, if you choose to approve this, that the approval language, um, indicate that prior to the use, there must be, um, protocols and procedures approved by the board, um, to outline the use of them. Those don't exist.
Protocols have not yet been approved for either one of these.
Right, well, right. The, the vape detectors, not really protocol other than...
No, I do think there should be protocols, given of the magnitude of what these devices can do, right, yeah, limitations on it and the expectation within the buildings.
Well, there's...
Right.
Okay. Definitely do that, so we won't, we won't use them until the, those are approved.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to know about the vape detectors too is how is the tech department going to keep them secure?
In what way?
Uh, well, because they're Wi-Fi enabled, I mean, they're part of the network. So, you know, and, well, I guess part of that can be part of the protocol. Um, I just see that there's, you know, the possibility of they, they just need to be secured, I'm not sure how they're going to be secured. I mean, at this point, they don't have a camera, but they do have camera capabilities, they do have listening capabilities. I mean, be, I mean, people hack stuff twenty-four seven, they are, i- it's another open hole, you know?
Okay.
Intrusion. That's the other thing, is I don't even know how secure our network is or what those protocols are. And when the last time is that we even had a audit done on that security, but I guess we can discuss that in another meeting. Maybe we just have to look at other districts that already have those vape detectors and find something to add to it.
Okay, sure. Or Elaine and Post Paul schools, you have them, so I can reach out to both of those school districts.
Do they have policies or procedures or anything, please?
I'll check with them.
Okay, perfect. No, we don't have to re-invent the wheel.
Prefer not to.
Yeah.
Actually, get recreated, we have a growing list of all of our district needs, but... So I'll entertain a motion regarding metal detecting wand use.
I move we approve the use of metal detectors.
What's your recommendation on this? Um, as much as I wish it wasn't to approve it, I think, um, at this point, it's the only way that, my concern is more about the kids that we, um, you know, have on some sort of a behavior contract and that part of that is that they're, they're having a check-in and their backpacks are being searched. Well, they can search their backpack, but if they have something on their person, we don't know that. And John Hatcher is somebody I have a lot of respect for. And when he was really struggling, we had a student where he had to do that because visually he could look at the kiddo, but it's just very easy to have something on your person and not be able to see it, and so, um, I, I am only in support of using these in very specific, um, instances. That would be outlined in a, in a policy or a protocol.
Yeah. And what was the cost on these?
Thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-eight dollars for each one? How many each did you purchase?
One per school.
For the, in the secondary schools?
Okay, so five total?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Oh, yeah, okay. Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Four in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to the Heritage Health MOU. Explain to me again why we have Heritage Health within our district.
Um, they, I'm just finishing writing my notes, so I don't forget.
Sure, go ahead.
They are here, um, just as a courtesy, I guess, for parents, um. We had parents who were, who struggled to get their, they wanted their kids in counseling but didn't, either didn't have the, um, funds to transport them to wherever that service was going to be given, or, um, they didn't have the flexibility within their work schedule to be able to transport their kiddos. Um, it's, uh, for kids who do have weekly ongoing counseling, um, it, they miss less, uh, school when it's on campus because there's no transportation time. But, um, that's services, we just offer the space, but ultim- ultimately, it's the parents who are requesting the services. And then they're doing the, uh, Heritage Health, um, mental health specialists go out to the home to do the intake and, um, and it's the, and the parents sign, uh, permission for their kids to see a counselor. Um, really, the only thing we do is provide the space. There's no...
This afternoon, the summer, they've been providing camps that we've been contributing financially to.
Right, and this is not that, this is just the providing, if we, there, I believe there will be a proposal from Heritage Health to, um, allow them to run the camp, but they have heard loud and clear that we are not going to fund it. And so they are putting a budget together that they can present to you to show that they're going to be covering the costs. So this is not the summer camp, this is just the September through June, um, use of the facilities for mental health counseling per parent request.
What would be the detriment to our district if we did not, um, renew our contract with Heritage Health?
I don't think there's necessarily a benefit or a cost, uh, um, really, this is about providing us, uh, a helpful service to parents to make it, um, more easy, easily accessible for some families for their kids to participate in the counseling.
Is the referral based on parent request or are they referrals from someone in the school?
Um, oftentimes it comes from a meeting with parents where they're talking about challenges that the child is having in school and, uh, anytime on our, um, behavior contracts when kids are out of school and they're having to come back with a behavior contract, one of the things that they discuss is, are you, is your child in counseling? Can we do a release of information so that they can share what strategies they're teaching, so we can reinforce those strategies at school, so there's some consistency? And in that conversation, if they're not currently re- receiving services, but it's a need that the parents, um, want, are looking for, um, we can give them the rec- the information about Heritage Health and then they can contact them. So it comes from a conversation. Sometimes, sometimes parents will call the school and ask, because they're aware of it, do we, do you have any openings and is there any way for me to get my child in?
So if we have a student that exhibits some sort of behavior or s- situation where counseling would be beneficial, we suggest that to the parent and the parent makes the request to Heritage Health. So that would be the sequence.
If we did not, um, how much space are they taking up with our buildings? I mean, our buildings are crowded, we're overrun as it is. And now we're designating space for a service that I am aware, um, just because of my other job, um, I don't know that it's being used efficiently, um, but yet it's taking up space in our district, so...
It's not a space that's just set aside for, and nobody else uses it, it's, there's a space that's designated for the one day a week when they might be at Lakeland High School toward the three or four kids that they're seeing, um, that they can use, but it doesn't, it's not pushing anybody out of a classroom or anything like that, and it's not, it doesn't sit empty on the days when they're not there. It's just, it's a space that is kind of a shared space, so the conference room or, um, and another, uh, a classroom, maybe that's not being used on that, at that time, on that day. Um, I, I would tell, I would tell the board that if we chose not to participate in this, um, there are some of our kids who definitely benefit from that time who would not receive those services because parents cannot get them to their appointments. We actually have a waiting list because we only have three therapists. We have four therapists that cover all eleven buildings and there's a waiting list of, and there, and we have some buildings that aren't even being served because we don't have enough therapists to meet the need.
So who's picking and choosing that students get to go, go?
Um, I, I, Lynn's probably better, she's more, um, directly involved with that.
Heritage Health actually chooses, they take the lead, they do an acuity sheet of just the most at-risk and they kind of have the qualifiers. And then they'll meet as a team and decide, and then, um, decide who's going where, so in some situations, they might have a counselor going to two or three different buildings just because there's, they don't have somebody located at that school until the kid needs help, but Heritage Health decides where they go and how their staffing and resource.
Is the school looped into the treatment plan?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I should say if the parents give permission.
As I say, if there's a release of information.
If there isn't a release, and to my knowledge, I don't, I don't have any specifics as to if there are parents that opt out of that release, and there could be, I have no idea. But we are looped in if the parent gives permission. It's all parent-based, so... We do have in front of the wrong waiting list. Who's keeping kids in the classroom ten more hours of the day? Especially if they're on a weekly basis. Having that connection to, um, those strategies for helping kiddos or working with them, um, that collaboration might be, I think is pretty beneficial to them, so...
Uh, just to clarify, when, when would the counseling sessions take place? Is that going to happen during school time or late in the day or...
Um, it, it's, it's during school ti- most of it's during school time, but it would be during school time typically anyway, um, where parents are transporting kids, so it just reduces the, and it's typically on daily.
Time wire from school.
Mm-hmm.
I move to approve the...
I'll second.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Any opposed? Motion fails. Three in favor, or two in favor, three against. Motion fails. I move to deny the Heritage Health MOU.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Was opposed?
Nay.
Nay. What was the motion?
To deny it.
To deny that MOU.
I shall review down with that.
Well, we had to approve or deny, our motion to approve it failed. We have to take some kind of action, either approve or deny it, so...
So it's deny it?
It's deny it.
Um, three, four, and two against. Motion carries. Moving on to the school clubs. Um, I have a question on the esports club. Um, we don't have a student leader? Thought all the clubs were supposed to have.
Now they're school-sponsored, so that was, um, that was for the non-sponsored, they had to have a student, they had to be completely student-led. But these are all aligned to curriculum, so it can, um...
Well, he states that this class isn't aligned, but it's connected. I did look at the ICTs, so, I mean, is it aligned or not? Because if it's not aligned, is it, is, is an ICT not a standard? From what I read, it was, but I could be mistaken.
Um, yeah, that's computer, uh, well, I would have to look, actually. It's going to be your computer science.
And this, uh, the ICT is about digital citizenship. So I guess I'm just trying to...
Understand how it's aligned, yeah.
Yeah.
I see I C, I don't even see I C T.
Um, is do you put in the I C T dot nine dash twelve? Yeah, oh, I'll just come up. I don't think it's a link. Oh. Why did I use C T? Dot nine dash twelve.
So did you come up with I C T E, I C T Essentials? When you did that?
We did.
I'm not saying anything for Idaho.
I did at one point, um, let me find it again.
Yeah, I don't, these are not district sta- these aren't, I don't think these are state standards, I think these come from...
Mm-hmm.
It, um, because they're not in the standard. Because they're not in the standards.
It's under Idaho.gov, the Board of Education Information and Communication Technology Standards. Um, this is the two thousand and seventeen Idaho Content Standards K through twelve.
But not in computer science.
Um, it's twenty seventeen. And it is the ICT dot nine dash twelve dot two dot E. Um, which is identified here.
Okay.
Um, and it's Information and Communication Technology Standards under academics from the State Board of Education for Idaho.
Right, I'm just looking, I'm actually on this curriculum site.
So do we no longer have these content standards? Because it says twenty seventeen.
Right, I'm, well, we have, we have computer science standards. Those ICT standards are not there.
Okay.
And so I'm looking, and it used, they actually used to be in the back of the ELA standards? So let me look there.
Yeah, there's no student listed. They don't have to though. That was only when it was a non-school-sponsored. It had to be student-initiated. But now that we've chosen that they all are school-sponsored, they don't have to be student-initiated.
Did have to have a student involved though. I didn't know that we didn't.
Maybe a policy number.
Or, yeah, policy.
Um, yeah, so in...
Did say it one way, but then it also said the other way.
In, um, the essence of time.
Yes.
I would be more than happy to go back to this teacher and, um... Ensure that these standards are actually in the current standards because I can't find them in the current standards.
Okay.
And then we can, I could bring it back in May.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of having to search for them right in the beginning.
Right. And this, it should be very simple to find these and I'm not finding them, so... It may have been rewritten and now they're in the computer science register or label that way, so...
So then moving on to the, um...
And I will ask about the steward leader.
Okay, that'd be great. Wow, they did list those, okay. The... Idaho Model, Idaho High School Model UN Club. Um, I do have a couple of questions on this one. Number one, they want the district to provide financially for this club? That's what's...
Mm-hmm, there is actually, yeah, there's... Yeah, and there's a competition for that this...
Some of them don't have a financial obligation, but this one does, but yeah, that's what...
It doesn't. It's wanting us to provide food per diems and travel, um, or transportation. It does not say travel, does not say we're paying for rooms, does not say any of that. It just says transportation and food per diems. Um, because you have to go to the link.
You have to go to the live link.
Oh.
For whatever reason, the way that these two documents were made, we could not get them live in this...
That just gives you their constitution.
Yeah. Well, I could have swore I opened it by the other one earlier.
And then within their, within their constitution, um, I would like to see, I guess, the contract that they're having children sign.
Okay.
Um, because it states that you have to sign the contract, so I'd be curious to know what they have to sign. And the club does state that they may or they may not charge dues. Um... So I guess that's where I'm kind of...
So they, there is a competition in OIC at the, uh, yearly for this club. It's not really a competition, they go down and they actually participate in a more United Nations event.
I don't remember this coming before the board last year.
It didn't.
Oh.
I just found out about it, so that's why it's coming.
Okay. Um, all right then. How many kids participate in this club, do you know?
Please, I can do that now. I can ask that question?
Has the club been meeting this year?
Um, I believe so.
Oh.
Okay.
Any other questions? Let her take a motion, it is an actionable item.
This shows future competition dates in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, but what? Was there not one this year?
Uh, there was.
Did they already go?
They did.
Did the district pay for it?
Tell our county about it, yes.
We paid for it?
Mm-hmm. That's why it's coming to you, so...
Maybe if we got our bills before we approved them.
Right. I move to table the student clubs, or the school clubs, um, until more information is given on the e-clubs and the contract is provided for the UN.
Do you want, um, because they're, they are asking for financial consideration, would you like, like a budget?
Yes, please, that was kind of the intent of that, not just narrative, but actual...
Dollar amounts.
Dollar financial application was my intent of adding that to the application.
Second motion.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And within that, their little budget, I'd also like to know if they are collecting dues.
Yep.
Moving on to the course name change.
This is actually, um, sorry, this is, uh... A moot point, um, or a, uh, we don't need to take action. Um, Principal Everlin, uh, agreed with you and it will be American Government for kids who are not taking it as dual credit and then it will be in a new political site, uh, PoliSci ten ten for the kids who are dual credit.
Perfect.
There's no change needed.
Okay. Moving on to the attendance boundary change.
The, um, software that we use to make the, the map that we currently have, um... We do still have that software, however, our current Director of Transportation isn't sure how to use it. It hasn't been used since Daryl Rickert was here, so she is going to need a little bit of training to figure out how to create the map that you had asked for.
Okay.
But she did try to use the TransFinder to give you at least some indication of, uh, where those, um, pockets are. And I don't know how helpful it is, but this is our current map.
Right. Um, I do have a question. The recommendation here is, um, moving Deerfield subdivision and Brookshire. Uh, moving both of those to John Brown.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in the minutes of the meeting, there was actually a Hauser location that was more that was going to be being moved. Why is it that that's been changed?
Um, it hasn't been changed, it, that's, that was an error on my part. So Hauser is not going, we talked about Hauser. But the decision was made not to recommend that change. Um, the part that I forgot to put on here that I'll bring to you at the next meeting is there is a, there's a little area behind Granny's pantry.
Mm-hmm.
Um, kind of reservoir road area that is zoned for Twin Lakes Elementary. Um, I believe all but one or two of the kids who live there are already currently going to John Brown. Um, so it's really not a change as far as enrollment to John Brown, but because so many kids are zone transferring, that was the other part that, and I missed that because I was looking at where we actually moving kids.
Okay.
So we, we looked at several different, um, options, but, uh...
No, and I appreciate the efforts of the committee. I was just like, wait a minute, they recommended all this and now we're getting just these two little pieces? And I didn't understand the why.
No. We had several brainstorming.
Right.
When we started talking with Jessica about what made the most sense, which, I regard transportation, um, the two that we landed on were the Brookshire and the Deerfield.
Did you, uh, look at all, uh, about maybe moving the kids in the Majestic Park area?
To John Brown. But we certainly could go back and have that conversation because that's just continuation of that Brookshire up Meyer to, uh, John Brown. Because, uh, west of Meyer is Betty Keifer, but east of Meyer, uh, so, um... Yeah, Majestic, uh, Park down there and then the, the names are escaping me, but, um, Quail Ridge, I think.
Can't quite tell, you know, from the map, how many kids might be involved?
Uh, there are a lot of kids in that neighborhood. So we can take that back, I can take that back to the committee and ask them to take a look at, at those numbers, have Jessica run those numbers and see. Because the goal really is to decrease Garwood.
Right.
And a little bit of Twin Lakes. And shifting over to John Brown because we are not fully utilizing John Brown. We have classroom space at John Brown.
Right.
That we need to utilize. And, um, that gives us a little bit of time to make some more long-range plans for what we want to do and to see if our, um, increased enrollment continues. So I can take that back. That was, that's a good idea. It didn't even come up, you weren't at our meeting, so that's why.
I thought we were all supposed to be rotating that delegation to be going to the long range, but...
Well, it's your rotation, isn't it?
She was, she's been there.
It's been my rotation every, every month. Except when I wasn't feeling well.
So, um, Trustee Jones, would you... What would be the, um... The eastern boundary, I guess, like how far over would you, are you just looking at that subdivision right there at Majestic and...
Yeah, um, let's see.
So it's basically the...
Brookshire goes, uh, a half mile into the section, so... Probably the same in that other section. I don't know where those new apartments are going to be located exactly based on the map.
Right there in that corner.
That kind of gray corner?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, these attendants don't, these attendants zones don't account for the land swap either.
Yeah.
So we need to consider that because construction's really just a, all of us over there.
Because those would go to Garwood, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
So we need to create as much breathing area as we can on Garwood, and that's what, well, generates my thinking about this other.
Yep. Yeah, that's a good idea, I didn't, that didn't even come up. And that will definitely help Garwood. So... I will take that back to the committee and when, uh, we meet the first Monday of May, so May first, I think is the next date. Um, I'll just ask Jessica to kind of help us figure out how many kids that would be and then we'll come back with an updated recommendation.
May first, the next May.
So these little blue dots.
Yeah, you're gonna be there.
On what was given to us today. I didn't realize was given to us. Um, the little blue dots are kids, are children?
Yep.
Okay, so that lone little guy in the red, shouldn't he go to Betty Keifer? Or to John Brown?
So we have some kids who are, who live in a certain attendance zone who are zone transferring, requesting a zone transfer to another building, so those blue kids in that red zone indicate a zone transfer.
Okay.
Same with these kiddos in the purple zone.
So the red zone is not TLE? Because the red zone's TLE.
Right, so whoever, if red is TLE, then you've got kids who live in Twin Lakes Zone who are zone transferring to the blue school. Which color is the blue school?
You're saying that all of these students are transferring to the blue school?
Yeah, I'm lost.
Yeah, the...
So there's that one little guy in the red.
Right.
Which that red zone is Twin Lakes.
Mm-hmm.
What you just said was that little guy in the red is zone transferring to Twin, which makes no sense because he's in the Twin Zone.
This map doesn't have the cut, same colors that Jessica's had.
So the blue is Garwood.
Right.
Right, so that blue student in this red area is a student who should be going to Twin, but they're going, they are zone transferring over to Garwood. So, so they live in Twin.
All of these are blue. They're all blue. Blue everywhere.
Oh, well then...
Yeah, this is...
This is different than, this is...
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say is that...
She showed us.
Yeah, we just got this today.
The way she has it is, the way Jessica shows is that if they're red and they're not in the red zone, then they're transferring to the red zone school.
Who's purple?
But...
They're all blue.
They're all blue, yeah. That's okay.
So I think, okay, so I think she's just showing us Garwood. And I, so these are kids who currently live in... I think what she, maybe what she's showing and I, and this map is really hard to tell. But these could be kids who are currently going to Garwood who would be going to John Brown if we change the attendance boundaries. These kids in this purple area, maybe?
Well, according to her key, the purple is John Brown.
Right.
Which I don't understand why we have a little sect of John Brown way down the road, but a whole huge sect that's going between Garwood and the green people, which is...
This must be Betty Keifer.
No, that's not right. Because the greens have Spirit Lake, so it's not, it's Spirit Lake.
Zion is Betty Keifer.
Oh, Zion. It's a collat deal. Cor Green, given my current mental state. Um, okay.
So, and Jessica would be here tonight, it would have been very helpful for her to be here because I'm probably not giving you accurate information.
Well, that's okay.
I do think that this is, she's trying to show that these kids currently live in the Garwood zone and if we change the boundaries, they would be in John Brown. I think that's what she's trying to show. But that's what I think.
Okay.
Um, but since we're... But since we're going to talk about a different, taking a different look anyway, I'll just make sure she's here for me first and try to, this will give her a month to try to figure out the, the system on that map to redraw the attendance lines.
Okay.
It's an old system. I don't know if it's been updated. It's been here a long time.
No, that's okay. But this was given to us today and the rule is that doesn't happen, so.
Yeah, I think she was trying to make the other map work and she couldn't, but she wanted to have something to do with that, so that's.
Okay.
So we can not do anything with this tonight and I will come back on May 8th.
Perfect. I move to table to the next board meeting.
Second.
Motion in the second, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed hearing and the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items. We have correspondence. The official canvas from Cootie County Elections was provided. Okay, okay.
Just.
Just.
Informational.
Just informational.
Do we comment? What's that?
The audience.
Okay. Comments, questions or discussions?
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you all for coming. Summer base is.
We're not able to run it and we need to get that information out to parents as quickly as we can, but I didn't want to do that without letting you know first. Since we annualized our classified salary and they get paid over the summer, they're not as driven to work during the summer to, to have that paycheck coming in, and so we are really struggling even summer maintenance, might be struggling to put a summer maintenance crew together. So we'll have to do that differently this year too, but we do not have the staff to run summer base.
So our base employees are salaried, they're not hourly?
They're hourly, but they're, they're, so if they're working ten eighty, how many hours is left of school year?
Yeah, they're, they're, they work ten months, but they get paid over twelve like ages.
Yeah, so we figure out.
Pay is spread out over the twelve months.
We figure out at the beginning of the year how many hours they're working based on the number of hours per day and how many days in the calendar they're working. And the hourly rate of pay, so if they're making twenty thousand dollars for ten months, they, their pay is stretched over twelve, so they get paid through the summer. They're getting paid in the summer for work they've already done.
Okay.
It's like a savings account, so they, they can budget otherwise. It's annualization. It's helped, you know, as far as months of service towards Percy, plus then like over the holidays, at Christmas, instead of just going directly out to Time Sheet, they would, you know, over Christmas, they would only have two weeks of pay. This way they can budget and if it's set, they know what, you know.
No, I totally get the understanding. I mean, behind spreading it out for twelve months, I get that. Are they not incentivizing for summer work?
Right, yeah. That was the unintended consequence of that and actually it wasn't even really that big of a deal until about everything COVID. We came back from COVID and things completely changed.
Yes, I know. Okay. Well, I mean, if it's the recommendation to not run the summer program, then.
Yeah, if we can't staff it, then it, it's a done deal, exactly. I do think that we should start talking about next year for that though.
It's on there. We do have the staff to run out of Garwood only. And those are the two sites we're currently running.
So they're just asking to maintain the two programs. How would we look at ever growing it?
We just have to get to a point where when we, we have positions posted, we actually have people who are applying and we can easily fill the positions that we currently have. The, the problem that we're, the struggle with base is it's, it's either a couple of hours early in the morning, which a lot aren't, that's not a shift a lot of people like to have. And if you're trying to get them to stay and benefited, they, then it's three hours in the morning and then three hours in the evening and there's this big gap in between and it's not really conducive to family time, you know, they're working when their kids are not in school instead of while they're at school.
Right.
It's just, it's a hard, and we tried to combine it with para position in the building, so you work three hours base morning and then you have three or four hours in the day of para time and then another para takes over when you finish and then they work the base, but even doing that, we couldn't, we just couldn't keep people. That's what we were doing when we finally had to pull back and say, we can't. Couldn't staff John Brown a couple of years ago and we had to move everybody over to Betty Kiefer to get us through the end of the year, so until we have, we feel like we can say to parents, we are a hundred percent certain that we can staff this program and keep it staffed all year long. It's just such a hardship for them to have to try and find childcare after the school year starts.
Oh, yeah. Is it supporting itself?
Yeah.
One hundred percent?
One hundred percent. Brian?
One hundred percent?
I haven't looked for, this year the finals aren't in, but previously, yes, it has.
And we don't have a director anymore, so really we have a base coordinator at Apple and one at Garwood. And then the one at Garwood gets a little bit of a bump and maybe she's, she's the lead in taking care of all of the para communication and all of that. I think there are total four employees in that.
Can you review the income and expenses just so that we know currently where we sit with that program? There's a community race or relay race. Community relay race.
Yes, so we used to do the Relay for Life relay race. We haven't done it, we haven't done it since COVID. But there is a request from staff and some community members to bring it back and so there's a staff member who's willing to organize it. We're going to rename it and the current, I, I told the teacher that I'd like to talk about the name because the current name I don't love, so. But it'll be something positive and upbeat like, you know, live a purpose-filled life or live with purpose or something. It's really just a life-affirming kind of an event and they want to run from Spirit Lake Police Department to Raptor Police Department, so they're going to change the course. But it's a great community event. It's not a money fundraiser or anything. There is a little bit of a a cost to put a team in just so that, to cover the cost of the shirts and the permits that we need to run.
So will it support itself or do district funds need to?
It will support itself and they're actually, we currently have about five thousand dollars, I think, in a fund specifically for life awareness relay that have been raised over the couple of years that we did the. So what will happen is she will use those funds to order the shirts and then put the money back in as we get the registration dollars. But it is self-sustaining. There won't be any district funds other than that budget that was created by the event itself.
Will people be voluntold?
Nope.
To participate?
I don't volunteer anybody except for Lynn.
You're so special.
Or maybe I try. Yeah, that's not my MO. I don't like to do that.
Okay. As long as that doesn't happen where people are required to participate in a volunteer community event.
Yep.
So this is just a discussion item.
Yes.
So they're just doing it anyways. Which I mean, I'm not opposed to, let's get together and let's have this relay race, do all this, whatever, support the school district, but I do have an issue when we just change the name of something because of what it was associated with prior isn't acceptable and for the district to back that or what have, I just don't see the point. I mean, if they want to get together and do something like that on their own, they can do it. Why does the district have to put their name to it? I guess is my, is my question, you know?
Because of the money. Because the district has, is holding them money for this relay.
So the, the name change, I guess I didn't realize that there was anything wrong.
Well, it's associated with the SOS and the whole, you know, that whole curriculum thing that we went through for a couple of years.
And it, I guess it's not, it's not related to the curriculum. I mean, it's, it definitely, it was born out of a desire because we had a couple of years where we had a lot of suicides in our community, parents and students. And so it was a, it was, it really the vision from, and it was a community-led part, it was a partnership between community and the district. The vision really was to just to get the word out that, that you know, our lives are, have meaning and you are, you are not replaceable and and so it was, that's why they called it life awareness. It's just to bring an awareness to the, to the community that we're, we have this thing in our district where we were really struggling with suicide. So the name change came more to just kind of disconnect this event from the previous superintendent, which is why I, my recommendation would be that it's more of a positive kind of like, I think it was, that was the name that came up was My Life Matters or something that just was a little bit too close to Black Lives Matter and I didn't want to go down that road, so.
Right.
So that's why I was just kind of brainstorming, but that's the, that's the intent.
Yeah, okay. What's the purpose of the relay?
Just to reinforce that everybody matters.
So then it's not about community, you just get the community together to support the district or the district to support the community? It's about suicide prevention?
It, yeah.
Suicide community.
So we're back to the suicide prevention?
It, it's, yeah.
Okay. Just being transparent.
Yeah, no, it's, it's definitely still about having an awareness within the community that, that people struggle with suicide. If that's not, if, I mean, if the board doesn't want us to have anything to do with that and we just want to do a community event, we can, we can certainly do that, but the person who's leading the charge of this is her passion and so that's why she wanted to pick it back up.
I guess it's just my struggle that we strayed so far away from education and became so hyper-focused on suicide. Because yes, we've lost students to it and it's horrific and tragic and should never occur, but we lost sight of what we actually are and I just struggle with that. Me personally.
I'm happy to suggest that we frame it around something else if that's the desire of the board.
I mean, I do believe suicide awareness is important, but we lost sight of being an educational institution, which I hate that word anyway, but an educational district. So what's the education component behind this? Because that's what we are. Just my thoughts.
I guess my question would be that if the community is asking for it, are they asking for just a community event or are they asking specifically for a suicide awareness?
No, they're not specifically asking for suicide awareness, not to my knowledge. They're just.
I just wondered where.
Forward to the relay race at the end of the year. It's kind of a fun event. And that was how that conversation started. And then Stacy said she's, because she's a runner, she's happy to help organize it. And we have dollars in there from the Relay for Life and that's kind of how that snowballed, so she's waiting for some direction from me so I can provide that. I just needed to kind of get a sense from the board as to what we'd like to see.
I believe the, the previous relay that was previously run under the previous administration was brought before us and we said no, thank you. So now we want to rename it and still do it.
So that, I wasn't aware of. I didn't know that the board had said no before.
Well, this isn't the Relay for Life because Relay for Life is canceled.
We don't say that.
Life awareness, yeah.
Life awareness, which was, you know.
So this is just a situation where we're basically partnering with the community for some positive event that people can enjoy and participate in.
And there's, there are a lot of runners in our community who like to.
Run away.
So I can, I mean, the event is one thing, the name of it, we just have to figure out what you want that to be. If you would rather it not have a focus on suicide awareness, then I can, we can agree on some of their.
Focus on positive community event somehow.
Look, I mean, this is, this is not board-directed, so it's, it's the district wants to do this, then the district can do this, but it's not board-directed.
But I'm sensing some reservation about the, the theme, so we can I would like to do something that the board can champion, so if it, if the sense from the board is maybe we, maybe we have a different theme around it so that it is about, because our focus this whole year has been building community around our schools and bringing people together. So if we can come up with a different, a theme, I guess that aligns more with the work we've done all year long.
Well, and again, I'm not trying to say that I'm anti-suicide prevention.
No, I know. I hear what you're saying.
But I do believe there was more to our community than I was focusing on one area. And if this is truly about community, then bring the entire community into it. But that's just my opinion. I mean, I'm all for.
United Community Relay.
Well, they do like the, you know, in Portland, Oregon, they did the hood, hood, hood to somewhere and run. I can't, I can't think of what the end of it is. It's the coast somewhere.
Run from the hood?
It's the. Yeah, run from the hood. That's about it these days over there, but you know, so we could come up with something catchy like the, because it's Spirit Lake to Rathrum, so we could. Southbound forty-one. Highway forty-one.
Run that forty-one.
Highway forty-one run.
I know, I've been reading a lot about history for this area and the witches and the.
Oh, yeah. When I grew up in Post Falls, we were told, do not drive to Rathrum at night. The coven will scoop you off of the road and you'll never be seen again.
Yeah, so we could be real creative.
Yeah.
Run for your life.
Okay, so we will focus, we will focus the title on something community-based and fun.
And again, if these people want to do their own thing.
Right, outside of the district, they can.
Better powder, half adder.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Future input. Future input. We're down to line in.
Well, we're already working on it, but I just want to make sure that we, that the public realizes that our work in our budget workshops will be basically creating kind of two different scenarios.
Right.
So that's just a discussion. I just wanted to throw that out there and let them know that we're not ignoring the fact that we have a levy on the, on the table and that that's, that's coming. We're not ignoring that. We're not going into it.
and that that's, um, that's coming. We're not ignoring that. We're not going into it blindly. We are having budget workshops, work sessions.
Yeah, work sessions.
To decide, yeah, to make those decisions.
Correct. Which requires a lot of information.
We may not, I'll be talking about it in these-
Right.
meetings right now. That is to come, but that is not something that we're ignoring, so.
Correct. Thank you for pointing that out. Anything else for the future?
Nope, I don't have anything right now. I am, I do want to, but I think I voiced that before. I, I am really concerned about our network security in the district. I've just never seen a protocol or how many audits we've passed, or what's implemented, or-
Security.
I mean-
Yeah, I don't even know if we-
Yeah, we should, I mean, there's a whole standard for the federal government for education and what should be happening or should not be happening, and how many audits you should have or shouldn't have. I'm just-
Would I like to say-
Would you do those audits?
Uh, well, you would have an outside, typically a third party, yeah, would, would do the audit, you know? And there's, you know, plans. You just line, lay out the plan like a, um, I wanna say a CISA plan, but there's, you know, a number of ways to do it. And most of the documentation is free. It's just somebody has to take the time to lay those out and answer the questions and, you know, and then somebody has to audit to make sure that those things are happening, you know? And then you put out a bounty for a few little community hackers and then see how secure you really are.
Right.
I'm joking, but that's true.
Yeah. No, it is true, yeah.
I mean, that is how a lot of people do it. I mean, they have the black hat hackers convention in Vegas, and the majority of the federal government shows up to recruit from there. So, I mean, especially as you expand and add more things, I mean, we really don't know our vulnerability. We think we're pretty safe, but-
Um, I had tried to inquire on some different things, because I have a friend who's like way up there in the techie world, beyond you. And, um, he sent me a bunch of information on, you know, ransomware attacks, et cetera. And when I tried to bring that up to find out where we were, I was shut down on it. I know multiple times from those asked for things and gotten presentations from one of the IT directors that are very, um, child-friendly.
Right, we're not looking for presentations.
No.
No.
Not at all. So.
So ransom, ransom, what did you just say?
Ransomware attacks. They, like, will hijack your system and then they want you to pay-
Right.
hootles of dollars to get it back. And it has happened to other districts. That's what I was showing, the past administration was, "Look, this is legit. Where are we?" And I just got a big runaround.
So, um, I will invite our IT people to come to the board meeting to answer questions you might have, but I will ask them to put together just an agenda, Idaho request kind of form, answering your questions.
That'd be great. Okay.
We won't do the presentation.
Thank you. On that note, I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061BDMJ.
Did we already do that?
We're going again.
Nice try, babe.
Tell me.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. We need a roll call vote.
Sure.
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Payton?
Yes.
Trustee Payton?
Yes.
Can we please take a bathroom break?
No.
Do I not get to go into executive session?
You say no?
I say no.
There's snacks back there.
I say no.
All right, we've come out of executive session. There is no, um, post-executive session actions. Meeting is adjourned. It's ten fifty.